And we
Live.
Up and running. Yep.
All right. Well, welcome everyone to the work session for Board of Education for World County School District Six. We are glad that you're joining us tonight. We will begin this meeting the way that we begin all of our work sessions just with board member comments and reports. And we'll start in reverse alphabetical order. So I think that will take us to Mr. Tally.
Thank you. I don't really have a ton. Just a great first day back in person. It's great to see the smiling faces running out of McCullough today at the end of the day. I'm excited for the spring semester. And I'm super proud as always of our staff and all that they do and all that they will continue to do for, for each other and, and for our parents. And most importantly, for our students. So keep up all the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Ms. Leaks has not made it yet. Miss, so I think that's Ms. Papas.
Yeah, it's good to be back. I did have the opportunity to attend the virtual student rep meeting last week, their first one of the year. They are looking forward to doing a board presentation in February and they're also, I think, looking forward to joining the strategic planning. That was planned for February 24th, being part of that process again. And then I also just wanted to say to Teresa and everyone else who participated, I really appreciated the message from the board. I think that was, I think that was a powerful message and I appreciate that work that went into that. So, thank you.
Ms. Mueller.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of students that I'm not sure the board may be aware. I see them a little later in life and one of them happens to be Jessica Rodriguez, was a graduate of Greeley Central and actually was in Kathy Azari's band. And I know we're going to see Mrs. Azari later, but she was the commencement speaker for the undergraduate graduation at UNC. And did a fantastic job of speaking to graduating under the cloud of COVID. And she was a student senator and she is applying to, she was a McNair scholar, so she was one of my students. And I just wanted to point that out because I want us all to remember that this comes full circle, that this kind of support that, you know, students that start out in District Six and then go through UNC, you know, then they're, they're graduating and moving on into the world. So that was really exciting to see. She actually was in jazz band with my own son several years back. So I also wanted to let you know, I talked to a couple seniors and you know, we, we sit there and, and talk about how this is such a tough year with the move, you know, remote and face to face and kind of vacillating back and forth as the, the needs are because of COVID. But I wanted to tell you, I talked to two seniors who had really great positive attitudes and thought that they have an opportunity right now in having their lives be opened up a little bit with space and that limitation of activities actually has allowed them to utilize their time to go after scholarships. One is actually a, a better finalist or semifinalist. I'm not sure quite how that works. And, and, and several of them are doing interviews already with colleges. So that was really great news to hear too. As much as we think there's a real deficit in COVID that they were seeing the, the bright side of, of that. So I just wanted to report those things out. I did have the opportunity to go to the 2021 legislative session preview today at UNC that they were hosting. I'm sure Dr. Pilch is gonna report on that. I did have to put in my two cents. I wanted to let you know that I wanted, hopefully the state legislators to consider continuing to move teachers up in the vaccination efforts. The report today I heard was that it probably is going to be about five weeks before teachers and education staff are going to be vaccinated. And, and just kind of let our legislators know and, and the people that were on the call know that that, that's challenging for keeping our students face to face, especially if teachers get sick and we have a lack of substitute teachers. And, and I felt actually pretty, pretty okay about making that statement there that teachers need to be a high priority. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Mash.
Um, well, my kids are excited to be back to school and I was sharing that my daughters at swim team practice. So it feels like that, that hope that we had in August, again, the hope that there can be some semblance of a normal semester. And things are looking okay in Greeley. So I also just wanted to, to say how much I appreciate the teachers that my students are, or my, my personal, my kids are, have in light of what happened this week at the Capitol, there was just excellent conversation surrounding that. I feel like in, in age where it's really hard to determine where the truth lies or how to read an article critically. I think my, my kids are getting an excellent education surrounding that at District Six, how to think critically, to weigh articles and opinions and, and pick apart the argument. I mean, I think that's kind of the unit that my son is, is doing in middle school specifically. And they're, they're forming their own arguments and, and bringing forth their, their points and their, their facts and their history and their, and things to, to present their opinion. But I just felt like that was handled really well, you know, just in the, the microcosm that I get to see as a parent. But so yeah, continuing to be optimistic about this year. I've received my first vaccine as a nurse. And I know that UC Health and Banner and Sunrise are, are rapidly vaccinating those 70 and older. So you know, as our kids go back to school, we can know that some of those grandparents that might be in the home are, are going to be protected. And absolutely everything we can do to continue to advocate for our students or teachers and staff to be next in line would be, we should, we should do everything that we can to help with that.
Thanks Natalie. Mr. Habley.
Happy New Year. It is great to see everybody again and I hope your holidays were wonderful. I too have a lot of thanks. I'm very appreciative of our staff and, and how they are working with the COVID and making our students be successful. Ms. Myers, I also appreciate the incredible efforts that you put into that letter. And, and I think that it resonated with quite a large number of people as I had many texts on Sunday morning. So thank you very much. And I've had several contacts from staff that appreciate the fact that, that we're going back. And Dr. Pilch, they're excited that you are going to communicate more information like you did at the end of last week. And, and they're greatly appreciative of that, you know, but they did have some questions since, since our, our students are realistically going to be behind where they should be. Are, are we going to extend the school year? Are we extending the day? Are we going to bring some students back early? And, and I'm, I have great faith that you and your staff, Dr. Pilch are, are working on this. But that was, I had several people approach me on that, but it's great to be back and, and thanks everybody for all they do.
Thank you, Mr. Habley. Dr. Pilch, did you want to answer that right now or is it better to wait?
You know, I actually have some comments around opening and COVID in my superintendent's comments in the business meeting. So I'm, yes, why don't I, I want to talk about Esther funding and some of our plans for that. So I think I'll wait till the business meeting if that's okay with you. And then Ms. Solis will hopefully be with us to be able to hear that as well.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Habley. I don't have, have too many additional comments. Again, thank you to Teresa and our communication team for, for always making us sound more intelligent than, than we actually are. And we appreciate it. I think that was, and thanks to Ms. Solis. I know she's not here yet, but that was her suggestion that we put that, put that letter in the paper. And so hopefully our, our staff know how mu, and our students and our parents and our community know how thankful we are for, for all the sacrifices they've made over the last few months to keep students in, in school. I did hear some concerning news yesterday. I think, I can't remember if it was NPR, but I think nationwide, we, we've lost three million students. That students that were in school a year ago, that, that we just are not in school now and we don't know where they are. And that's, that's just a concerning number and reminds us of the importance of the work that, that we do. Did get to listen today to Casby event just on what we can expect for, for budget. And I don't know that I, it just didn't, it wasn't a lot that we can, that I can make sense of in terms yet of, of we'll wait for, for Megan to, to tell us exactly what we're getting. But, but it is exciting that we are getting another round of, of funds from the, from the federal government to help us through this. And there's something else on my mind, but I've completely forgotten it. So I don't know if Ms. Solis has made it yet. Don't have to switch screens, but I don't see her. So we'll just, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our quarterly calendar review. And as has been the case for, for weeks now, our, our calendar is pretty bare. There, there's not much other than our, our normal board meetings and work sessions. We do have a meeting. Just for, I'm sure we all know this, but for those who might be watching, we do have a meeting on Thursday. It's Friday. Friday we have a meeting. So, so you're welcome to join us for that as well, if you would like to. And are there any other events that you guys know about that were not on that calendar that we received?
President Matthews, I'll just share, just a reminder to, of the meetings on February 22nd with board members. The small, you know, two board members at a time with, with district staff. Those meetings are important. So if something should come up, work with Christina to get those rescheduled. Our focus on Friday for this work session will, the entire focus really will be strategic plan, innovation 2030. And, and looking at that and gathering board member feedback on that work that we've done so far.
Okay. So this Friday, we're, we're all together. And then the next Friday, we are on the 22nd in our two, two-person meetings.
And both of those will be virtual. I, I do expect that our plan would be that on the 25th, we'd come back in person for in-person meetings. And unless the board has, you know, a different, a different thought around that.
Well, that, that's my expectation as well. And my suggestion for us as a group that we, we do what our students are doing. If they're online and struggling with, with the challenges of being online, we, we stay online and, and struggle with the same challenges. If they're in person, we, we go in person as well. So we'll, we'll be back in person. Our kids, hopefully everything, fingers crossed, the positivity rates hanging in there and we're still a, a relatively healthy community. That's going to be, I know my kids will be excited. So and I'm like Ms. Papas, I'll be excited to see you guys as well in person. Our next item is we have, Ms. Solis, before we head on, you're, you've joined us. Would you like, you want to throw in some comments or reports before we go any further?
I would just say that I, I am concerned what's happening, obviously, from, sorry, my dogs, of what's happening at DC and, and what's going to be coming up over the next couple of weeks. And just wanted to make sure that we reach out to, to our staff and make sure that they know that we're here for them. And we're, we're having the same struggles too. So that's just what I've been hearing lately from community members is just the concern around that. Obviously we're an elected official. So anytime you see anything that happens around elected officials, that is concerning. So just to my fellow board members, you know, this, this is a tough job. Thank you for what you're doing. We see other people trying to do the same stuff that we're doing and we all have to stay strong.
Thank you for that, Ms. Solis. Our next item, Dr. Pilch is our district unified improvement plan. And so I will turn this over to you.
I am just going to pass it straight to Dr. Dattery. We're on a pretty tight timeline tonight with a shortened work session. So Dr. Dattery, I'm going to pass it right over to you.
Sounds good. Thank you. And I will share my screen. And I'm hopeful. Does that work? We can all see that. All right. So tonight I just want to be able to share with you just a little bit more in depthly in our work session. Our district unified improvement plan and what's going into, into that as it does come to you tonight as an action item. So just real briefly, this, we have been taking the time to, to review the work from last year and really develops kind of through the months of October, November and December, our district unified improvement plan. Many stakeholders have been involved with this from our academic achievement team, as well as our district accountability committee, our assistant superintendents of school leadership. Also being included in this work as we really are prioritizing what is it that we can help support the work of the district? And continuing to look at what our main priority performance challenge is and what are those root causes. This was updated this year and is alignment with our strategic plan and our direction and vision within I-2020. I do want to say, much like our schools, without the end of year data that any of us gathered, it is very, there's very little change in what I'm sharing with you in our UIP, in our district UIP, very similar to our school UIPs. We did not have any of the typical data that we would have to analyze and to be able to make any significant shifts. So what we really took time doing this year is spending time focusing on one of the action steps that would further the work of the district and further support, as I said, our schools and our leadership to continue to do the work in, in their schools. So what we're uploading, what we are sending to the state, really like these trend statements are all based on the data from the year prior, not this last year. So I just, I want to just kind of keep you aware of that. So these data sets and this, this is not looking any different than what it did when I presented it to you a year ago. And so we will just upload that same data. We are certainly in the last three years prior, increasing in ELA for elementary. It's pretty stable in middle and at high school within the Colorado PSAT SAT. And we are increasing in our percentages of students reading a benchmark as measured also in DIBELS. With that increase of students reading a benchmark, we have decreased over the last few years, the number of students that are identified as having a significant reading deficiency. And then in math, it's been fairly stable for the last few years prior. Again, like I say, not having last year's data to compare this to, but pretty stable in math. And it has increased when looking at middle school math data over the last three years, performance had increased. Our district UIP does really focus on the work of our gifted and talented students so that we do not have to submit a separate GT plan. So that is all incorporated. It's part of what we need to do per the state. So we do track data very specifically on our GT students and that, as you can see, we're trending in the right direction with that as well. And then when we look at graduation rates, we do have data for that, but it is embargoed until tomorrow. So I know we will be getting you that data. Certainly I can give you preliminary, a look into this and say it is still continuing to trend in the right direction, increasing our overall four-year graduation rates as well as these subcategories. And pretty well seeing stable now. We've decreased pretty significantly and now posting rather stable with our dropout rates. So again, the priority performance challenge did not change. We, because we've not had new data to look at, we did not feel comfortable in making any adjustments to this performance challenge. So we just left it as it is. And that is really focusing. And, and you know, that being as it may, really focusing on our ELA and math academic achievement and very specifically looking at our subpopulations of our second language learners and our students with special needs. Same with these root causes and root causes are more what is not working well. We did not make adjustments to that. We really feel like we probably could have made some adjustments. We feel like we've been working in these areas. But again, without additional data, it's preemptive to make any significant changes and adjustments. And these are certainly good areas to continue to focus on, continuing to work on, you know, ensuring that all staff, because not all of our staff have had a consistent understanding of that alignment of the standards at that grade level expectation. And what that entails to ensure students are meeting the expectations at their respective grade levels. What that is really wrapped up inside of those core educator capacities and the professional learning supports that go into that. And very tightly aligned to the professional learning supports for teachers that are teaching our students English as a second or third language, as well as students with disabilities. And that's expanding across not just the, that all our teachers understand that in those core content areas, but also in those elective areas so that all students have access into grade level content. And then that final of really ensuring that we have systems of support, that multi-tiered systems of support. We have been engaging in grant opportunity that really helps to support our work in this area and really making it system-wide. Getting much better at that across the system. And we're very grateful to our educators, to our, and our leaders, who are really moving that work forward. So we as a district just need to continue to support our schools and our building leadership teams to do that work. So where we really spent time this year and what you see is significantly different, the differences from this year's district UIP from last year's is really in the action steps. So two major improvement strategies that we are focusing on. The first is really that of quality tier one instruction supported by tier two interventions. So really what are those first tier of instruction that all students get? And then if students need additional support or if students need extension support, making sure that all students are getting that tier two targeted interventions that's just right for them. And these are the action steps, some of which are the same, some are different, some, there are additions as well. So can, we are working with West Ed on a very small contract that's really just supporting a few of our, our district coordinators, as well as just a couple of schools to really continue with that model of, of doing that work really well. And then those schools are really able to build capacity across the rest of the system. It's been a good, good approach. Coaching support, continuing that support with our special education staff, as well as our EL staff and supporting them with those tier one instructional practices. The, we do have some turnaround support, a consultant that is coming in and helping a few of our elementary schools and really targeting the work that they do in those schools. So we're using some dollars to support that from a grant. Ongoing co-teaching support, while that is, that looks very different this year than it has did last year and even the year prior. There is still co-teaching occurring. They have done, our schools have done incredible, an incredible job of still cohorting students and making sure that if there is a co-teacher in that room, that it is a very thoughtful approach and supporting that. And so Dr. Villa has continued to support our schools in that area as well. We have hired Read Act specialists. They are, and hiring Reading Core tutors. Our Read Act specialists are not able to support us in our schools significantly this first semester, but hopefully we'll maybe be able to make some adjustments in that for second semester. And then continuing the work of the instructional framework implementation, the special education action plan, implementation of that plan continues. We also are supporting particularly at the secondary, this math initiative. So really focusing on supporting powerful math leads at the secondary level to further advance student learning and achievement in math. And then the last few around identifying what are those tier two interventions? Is this is very focused? This strategy, this implementation strategy is very focused on that. And wanting to make sure that we're utilizing the best tier two interventions that are really going to pinpoint math and literacy needs that students might have. And then the Gareup grant, we have that, that we are continuing to support students with as well as Avid district-wide and continuing to support that professional development learning, even in a virtual environment. And so then the second major improvement strategy is really on culture and climate, social emotional learning supports. We've talked a lot about that this year and really doing some work that's supporting our teachers and our leaders to support our students in this area. So the first is, there's been, and we reported on this earlier in this semester around the work of our school equity teams and continuing to support them from a district level to further the work that they're doing in the schools. The FAST team is working diligently with our partners, with our North Range partners and our FAST team are, that is our family and student support team is what that stands for, really consists of our counselors, our social workers, behavior specialists that really come and provide services in-house to our students to support them in areas of need with social emotional learning support needs specifically. Really on many of our buildings are really focusing on the implementation of those routines and procedures that really support, really when you think about it, that tier one implementation of climate and what's conducive to learning and those kinds of things. And then as I mentioned earlier, we have our MLT, which is our, our MTSS leadership team that meets quarterly and continues to focus on the professional development needs of the system. This year we're actually moving from one system Alpine to a new system that was purchased by EduClima. So it's not by our decision, but they were purchased, so really supporting the system and making that transition. And that's, and really utilizing that new EduClima system of support for, for all of our buildings. So we'll be doing some training with that this year. Our social emotional learning teams is, we have adopted, and this kind of goes with the next one, the new curriculum, as you all know, really supporting our, our school teams and with solid implementation of using those resources and utilizing all of the different resources within not just second step and step and seven mindsets, but also the array of resources that we have into really, and it's all on their, just on our district website to really help support our teachers in meeting the needs of our kids in this, particularly in this time. And then the last page here is really on some student mentoring supports, school equity team training of Equify. And we talked to you, talked about that in an earlier report of really supporting and building capacity with professional learning supports, college and career readiness, exploration opportunities, and that's the internship program and continuing our apprenticeship program. There are some additional industry certificates that students can receive and really helping to ensure that our students are taking every advantage of making, of providing them the opportunities to be both college and career ready as they move through their secondary career. And then finally continuing to provide staff mentoring support. There's so much that our staff are expected to do and now is no less important for them to really be able to do so much for their kids. So really providing these paid mentor mentee pairs, being able to do that for a second year in a row has been very helpful and very supportive of our teachers, particularly in their first year of teaching. So those are the main, main big rocks of things, which there are still several areas that we're focusing on as a district. And as I, as I mentioned, and you probably have hopefully been able to take a little time working through what our schools are doing within their school UIPs. These things really support the work that they are leveraging in the schools as well. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have or.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. We do have a question from Ms. Papas. And that, and guys, just if you can see how Terry's raised her hand, I don't even know how you do that exactly. But I can see that a lot easier on iPad than when you raise your hand in the chat. So if you can do that, that, that's really helpful for me. Thanks. Go ahead, Ms. Papas.
If you go to the participants, there's a, a menu that comes up that says raise hand. So it's pretty easy. I figured, yeah.
No, I think they've changed something on, on the iPad actually. So, but that's great that they added that.
Yeah, it's at the bottom of the screen. So thank you, Dr. Dattery, for the, for this information. I really appreciate it. I appreciate a couple of things. I appreciate a couple of things, the social emotional support. I know that Mr. Tally talks about this quite frequently and I appreciate that. But I, I really have to, and had the opportunity to hear from many of our high school kids that are really suffering from some pretty significant mental, it's hard, socially emotional burn. So I really appreciate the focus on that. So thank you for that. The other question I have, I'm wondering about, and I don't know if this is the right time or not, so just tell me if not. I'm wondering about assessments that are happening this year. So number one, I'm wondering about the WEATA assessment because I know that this is the time for that. Also, I know we have been doing the NWEA with the beginning of the year and then I'm assuming it's in here as well. And the other one I'm wondering about is DIBELS and just kind of how that's working this year. I guess I'm mostly wondering about WEATA, how that's going to work. I know we're getting kids back in person, but just kind of wondering how all that's going to work with cohorting and the like. So if you could speak to all that, I'd appreciate it or a different time. Thanks.
Are you okay if I address that now, Dr. Pilch as well? Okay. So with, with WEATA, I'll start with WEATA and then I'll kind of share a little bit about what's happening with those other assessments you named as well. But as you mentioned, we just started actually, the, the testing window for WEATA just opened today, in fact. It does extend through March 12th, which is three weeks, a good three weeks longer than what we typically see in a, and that's, you know, in the WEATA assessment window. So the state had already extended that in large part, knowing that districts were very likely going to, if and when they were able to bring them back, might need more time in order to administer the WEATA in hopes that you actually have them back in person to administer and not have them working remotely. For us in our district, that is the case. All of our students will be back well enough in advance, or in-person students well enough in advance that we will be able to test all of our students and in cohort, in their cohorts, keeping them in their cohorts, not breaking cohorts. So our schools have put together a pretty extensive plan that they have submitted to our assessment department for review and just making sure that we are in alignment with all of those protocols and making sure that those things are happening. Also working very closely, you know, speaking of protocols and the things that they're making sure of with Lori, our lead, Lori McCarty, our lead nurse coordinator. And so she's been working really tightly with them and have some solid plans in place so that all of those, you know, the appropriate PPE is being worn, things like that. Proctors will wear masks as well as face shields, doing any of those kinds of close proximity speaking kinds of testing. And particularly with kindergarten students, that is a really a one-on-one, they have to do with the students, right? And so they will also additionally have the Plexiglas. So really having some solid protocols in place. Seating charts will also be kept so that if there is something that does occur, we will be able to really know where kids were sitting and that kind of thing. For our online students, we are actually, they have a, they're bringing them in over a three-week period of time because we do have to make every effort to still test every single student, whether they are working in an online environment or in, obviously are in person. So we do have students that are coming. We have this all set up at the administration building and our two coordinators, Jessica Cooney and Cassie Guy are really managing that so that they're staying on top of it and making sure that the, not only the protocols and things are being followed, but that the testing administration for students in that online program is, you know, goes very smoothly. So we have a whole set times for students to come in and really keeping that distance and ensuring that not only are students being, you know, will, will have that test administration, but that we are being mindful and safe as we do that. So we currently have about 4,000 students that are being tested and that is all of our non-English proficient students, as well as our limited English proficient students. And so it is a requirement and, and we have to make every effort to ensure we get every student tested. So does that kind of answer most of that that you were thinking, Ms. Papas?
Yeah, it does. I, having given the WEATA test increases, I was just curious how that was playing out. I appreciate that.
Thank you. We're not sure if we will be, we're, we're thinking that we're on track, I should say at this point for giving these Colorado measures of academic success still. We don't know though, you know, what other decisions may be made around that. But should we, from certainly a protocol standpoint and administration, the things that we do, do with WEATA will help to inform that as well. So that's our, that's critical. And then as far as DIBELS and NWEA, we did, we extended our NWEA window significantly this year. Normally we give that, we do that, both DIBELS and NWEA in the month of December, which is a long enough window in a typical school year. We did decide, we did still go ahead and keep DIBELS that during that time, some schools, very few, we did give them the option, but and a couple of schools did for the youngest of students, bring them in and again, follow some very safe protocols of, I'm working with again Lori to make sure that it was all in, in place. But they did bring them in and do one-on-one testing in a few schools for the youngest learners. Most of them did it online. That was, you know, there's protocols and we've got all of that that we worked with our school assessment coordinators on, and they were able to give the DIBELS in that format and online. And then NWEA, they either gave in a time period or we have extended the window through to almost the end of January. So all students will be back and many schools opted to just wait until we brought students back to give them the NWEA in person. So they can just do that and monitor that a little more proctorate, a little more easily. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Haley.
Ms. Dattery, thanks to you and all the people you work with on this. What I greatly appreciate is, is all the different trends and how positive they are. And I think the most visible data to our communities is the graduation rate and dropout rate. And those have shown such great growth since Ms. Solis and I were on the board that it's truly exciting. I also appreciate you and Dr. Pilch making sure that using Innovation 2020, that we're aligning everything from what we're doing concerning the trends to the mentoring program, to professional development and the decision-making. I think that that sets us apart and it helps our educators be focused. My, my question is really, probably really premature, but you know, with universities going away from the SATs and the ACTs, are they beginning to think that that may not be, we're not going to be taking the SAT in April again? Or is that just not on the table at this point?
So two parts to that, that we will take the assessment this spring if in fact, the state decides that we will give all of those end-of-year assessments, those annual end-of-year assessments. So that is all part of the Colorado measures of academic success. It's all part of that bigger assessment system. And SAT right now is the contracted and the PSAT are the two contracted assessments that we give at the high school. It is under review again, every, I want to say five years that goes under review at the state per the state statute. And so I did just get notice through some communication from the Colorado Department of Education that they are asking, they're calling for people to help be a part of a committee that would review next steps, what that looks like going forward, that kind of thing, whether we continue with one of those, with an assessment at the high school, whether it's ACT, SAT, or something else, or potentially, I suppose, completely move away from it, but with the accountability measures, I'm not sure. That will completely move away.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Solis.
So when it comes to testing and some of the kiddos that we had trouble finding out where they are, has that changed at all? Does that change that process? And then my second question is on new curriculum. Has that been able to roll out as normal, even though we're more remote? What is, what does that look like?
So the SEL curriculum, Ms. Solis, is that the curriculum you're referring to? Yeah. So really, we rolled that curriculum out at the beginning of the year. You know, even our high schools were still in a hybrid, albeit not fully, you know, every day, but we've really rolled that out. So at least at the beginning of this year and through really a good, a third of the year, students were in, in school and routines and that had already been established. So it was easier, and I'm not going to say it was easy, but easier to be able to go into remote and to be able to continue with the learnings and the curriculum supports in the remote environment. So yes, that, none of, none of that I'm going to say is ideal, but it is, you know, they have been able to get implementation off the ground and, and really provide the supports across their school system in that way. To the first question, as far as the students, every student that's enrolled are the students that this year are the students that we are expected to ensure that we are testing. So if we first, at some point in this school year, a student enrolled and it is our, it is an obligation that we do make sure that we know who, where they are and if they are a non-English or limited English speaker, we are required to test them. So every effort is not only made to do that, but I would say prior to that, making sure that we do know where our students are. Yeah.
Any other questions, Dr. Dattery? All right, Dr. Dattery, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Our next item, guys, is just to debrief, I think. Make sure I have it. Yeah, just to brief for a few minutes and before we go to our business meeting, we'll have hopefully a little bit of time for a break. But Mr. Haley, if you would like to go first.
It's always good to be working with this outstanding group of people. It's great to be back and I look forward to seeing you all face to face.
And hang on, who's next, Ms. Nash?
I echo what John said and thank you, Dr. Dattery, for walking us through the improvement plan and we were, we were in a good place coming into COVID and we'll keep working hard to, to help our students after.
Ms. Mueller.
Yes, I want to say thank you to Dr. Dattery and the, walking us through how the assessments work. That was really helpful. I want to also thank Dr. Pilch and her team for the communication that went out to parents and staff regarding the events of last Wednesday. Those were really helpful, including the tools that you included. I myself have looked up those tools to have conversations with my college students. So while they're not younger kids, it's still difficult conversations to have. And so I appreciate the resources and to, I have to make a shout out to Ms. Papas. Thank you, Terry, for reaching out to Dr. Dattery and Lindsay to coordinate with the DAC meetings. I was unable to continue with those as my class that I teach conflicts. And so I really appreciate you taking the lead on that and, and getting that situated so you could attend. I appreciate all that. And I look forward to seeing you all soon, hopefully.
Ms. Papas.
No problem, Ms. Mueller. I'm excited to be part of DAC. I too appreciated the, the information about testing, but I, but I do feel like it, I just struggle, I struggle that we're doing state testing. I know that it's important, but I feel pretty strongly and struggle with the fact that our kids are being asked to take any tests this year. I know we want to know, I, I know we want to measure their learning. I understand that, but especially when you think about the English language learners that are going to be taking the WEATA test and then perhaps at the end of the year, going right into that state testing, it just, I struggle with that. So I just want to put that out there and I, I know that, I know that a lot of work is being done and trying to figure out what's happening with that, but so just want to put that out there. It's great to be back and thanks to everyone.
Mr. Tally, or Ms. Solis, sorry.
It's great to see everyone, even though it's virtual. And you know, I'm just so impressed with our district. We just keep on going, you know? No matter what comes our way, we just keep moving right along. Even though this is a virtual meeting, it still feels like everything is right in place, right where it needs to be. And we're talking about everything on a timely basis, just like normal. So I just want to give a shout out to Dr. Pilch and her staff for keeping everything on track. I know it has to be challenging, so thank you for that. I too am concerned about the testing, like Ms. Papas, so I just want to piggyback on that and, and put my two cents in on that too. I think everyone's really struggling right now and that testing adds a whole nother level for that. And so I, I too am concerned about that. I look forward to seeing everyone. I hope everyone had really nice holidays and it's so good to see you and thank you for all the work that you do.
Mr. Tally now.
I really appreciate all the information from Dr. Dattery. I worry about testing, but I will be honest, I worry more about our social emotional wellness of our students and our staff right now. Of course, no shocker, that's what I'm going to bring up. I, I just think, and especially with the events that happened last week and with the inauguration coming here next week, I, I am, I am more than concerned about our students and, and what they're walking into here in these upcoming weeks and, and our staff of how are they going to approach those conversations and how are they going to, what are they going to say? I mean, I know we can send out a sheet with some talking points and things like that, but as we all know, kids take things down alleys that we've never thought that they would go down and, and next thing you know, we're in a rabbit hole, kind of talk our way out of things. And so I worry a lot about, about the social emotional wellbeing of everyone in the district. I'm also, I'm always so excited to see all of you, especially I had a pretty tough day at work today. So I was, it was great to look forward to coming to see you guys. I just, and I guess the only concern I have is I, I still, I believe that we should be meeting in person. If we have one student going to, going into a school that we should meet in person to, you know, perception is reality. And I think that if we're saying, go, you guys go into a building to meet with your class or your teacher, then we should come into a building to meet as the leaders of the district. I, that's, that's just my personal belief, but I won't go down a tangent or anything like that. But I am always grateful to see all of you, excited to hear about the great things the district is doing and how amazing our staff and students are doing. And I look forward to in-person learning for the entire spring semester.
That is all of our hope, Mr. Tally. A great meeting, guys. We, we've got about 10 minutes that we can, we can take a break. Again, thank you to Dr. Dattery for all the great information and look forward to hearing more and having some of that information you couldn't share, be shared this week. So thanks, guys. We'll, we'll start at, start at six.
Yes, sir.
Just tell me when we're ready to go, or are we going?
We can go anytime.
Okay. All right. I'm ready to go whenever, whenever you are, unless we're already going.
Oh, we're live.
Okay, sorry. Well, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Well County School District Six. On this, the 11th day of January 2021, this meeting will now come to order. Will you please join us for the pledge of allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Green, will you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Well, we are, again, thankful that you're joining us here tonight. Just wanna begin by welcoming everyone into a new year, and saying that we are glad to be back and glad to have our kids and students back in, in school, we look forward to the day when they can all be back in person, and that day is coming quickly. Also, just wanna convey our sadness, I don't always, rarely ever speak for, for this board, but knowing the members of this board, as well as I do, I do believe I can speak for, for all of us. Just saying how profoundly sad we were to see the events unfold the way that they did on Wednesday. I think we, we join most of the rest of the country in saying that, and I think as people who elected officials who represent students, so many students of color, we were particularly sad to see the Confederate flag being, being marched through, through our Capitol, and know the message that that's meant to send to to our students, and knowing that we have 23,000 students that pledge allegiance to a different flag every day, and to the republic, and to know that there are people that don't believe that they, still people that don't believe that they belong to this republic, just is saddening. And yet, just a word of encouragement to our students and to our staff, you know, that those people are a small, small minority in our country, and they will not win, and our community, I believe, is, is much different, and I'm very proud to be a part of this community in Greeley, and there are a number of things on, in our agenda today that I'm just want to, just want to extend my gratitude to this community for, and one of those is, if you go through our agenda, you'll carefully, and this will be in our consent agenda, you'll see roofs, and I know that that's not a, that roofs are not sexy, that's not something that anybody talks much about, it doesn't get the attention that a new school does, or Madison moving to a K-8, or so, so many of the many improvements that the latest bond issue will do, but roofs are, are important, and they keep our kids dry, they keep our facilities together, and, and before this bond issue, that, that was not necessarily something that was going to, we always had money to pay for, it was scrimping and saving and patching together, and so we're so thankful to this community for, for this bond issue. Something else that you may have seen is we need two members to serve on a mill levy override oversight committee. That is a committee that makes sure that funds are spent the way that the public intended them to be spent, and we wanna say again that we're thankful for that mill levy override, that has been a difference in our kids being able to, to continue education during this pandemic. We, I've said this so many times, but I have no idea what this district would have done without that mill levy override, and so we wanna say thank, that we're thankful to our community for that, and just extremely proud of this community for the way that they've handled this, this virus, as we've seen so many in other places, Spike, we have asked and asked this community to wear masks, to, to wash your hands, to keep distance, and not to not have those big social gatherings, and if our positivity rate is any indication, you guys have done that, and so we're, we're excited about the possibility of having children back in our schools, and that's only possible because that positivity rate has, has, has been dropping, and so we're so appreciative. And I probably have taken too long, so I will, we'll move on with, with the next item, and our next item of business is public participation regarding agenda items, and I don't believe we have any, anybody signed up to speak, is that correct, Ms. Green?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. So our next item is our work session report. Ms. Green?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and meeting dates. Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement Dr. Stacy Dattery provided information about the district unified improvement plan, and the board debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Green. We are now to our superintendent's report, so Dr. Pilch, I'll give this portion of the meeting to you.
Hello, Mr. Matthews, President of the Board and other board members, thank you. I do have several comments here to make as we start a new semester, and I do think, Mr. Matthews, if you're okay with breaking protocol just a little bit, I would like to allow the board to ask questions they might have about the reopening and about where we kind of are with COVID right now, if you approve that, sir.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. So again, as you said, welcome to second semester, we're just so glad to be opening this semester, and have, and I feel so good about our plan, I know that it, that it may not have been ideal for parents of elementary children to not have their elementary children in person yet, but, but we are phasing in our entry so that we can manage the numbers as we have sick children and sick staff, and may need to quarantine, and also to be certain that we're ready for all students, with the hope being that we stay open, and we keep all of our students in school pre-K through 12 this semester, so just as a little reminder about the schedule and what it looks like, we started everybody back remotely last week, all of our students and our staff, we did give our teachers additional planned days, an additional planned day in there to get ready. I've been asked by some parents about why do teachers need more time to plan? They've, you know, you've given them other time to plan, you did it at the beginning of the school year, and I, you know, I just wanna remind everyone that teaching in this environment where we need to be ready to go virtual at a moment's notice, really and truly, like we could, we have kids back today and pre-K one and two, or K one and two preschoolers tomorrow, and we could be sending children home tomorrow who need to be quarantined, and our teachers need to be ready to teach in that environment at a moment's notice, and so I know that's a hardship on families, but, but we've been really thoughtful about our decisions to balance the importance of having school open because of the long game, and the long game is to be able to stay open this semester. So our littlest guys are here today, along with all of the staff who support them, so our specials teachers, our special education teachers, administrators, support staff are all back today with the littlest ones, K one, two. Preschoolers will be back tomorrow, they typically don't have school on Mondays, but they'll join tomorrow, and then next Tuesday, we'll roll in the rest of our elementary students and our middle school and high school students to come back fully in person. Our high school students will come back on a hybrid schedule. It will look different this semester than it did first semester. First semester, we asked our high schoolers to work pretty independently on those two days that they weren't in person, and then Wednesday was used for individual work with the teacher. We will be doing instruction every single day for every single student for our high schoolers, so they will be learning synchronously. So for all those high schoolers that stayed in bed and then got up and did their work at three in the afternoon on two days a week last semester, they're gonna need to, to get up and engage every single day and, and be a part of that instruction, they'll either be in person, or they'll be at home online, but instruction will be daily. And then all of our students and staff will have an early release on Wednesday afternoons, and again, I wanna recognize that I know this, this is not ideal for families to have to take care of and manage childcare on an early release day like that, and as you all may remember, we eliminated early release a few years ago for that very reason, but we had to make this decision as we, as we surveyed staff and we've been listening to staff, it is clear they need more time to be ready to teach in this environment, especially as we think about implementing the synchronous environment at high school, and I expect that middle school will be ready for that soon, should they have to go remote, or should groups of students have to go remote, that that's very, very sophisticated instruction, and I just wanna remind you all that we went to one-to-one, a one-to-one initiative. We did that in a matter of, really, a few weeks to months as we have rolled it out this fall. It takes most school districts a couple of years to prepare and ramp up to go one-to-one, and to do all that digital content, and and so we, we've been asking our staff to do an awful lot, and it's been a big lift, and we've gotta give them a little bit more time to do that, and, and this will not be forever, there's hope on the horizon. We have a hope of a vaccine, as Mrs. Mash said, she has received her first vaccine. We were disappointed when the governor stepped back his plans for the vaccine, we were told here about 10 days ago that we, we would, educators would be naxed up for the vaccine, and I think then as the state reevaluated their vaccine supply and realized, you know, the folks who are in the hospital right now are those 70-plus-year-olds, and so the, really, the goal is to get the strain off of the hospitals and to keep people from dying. And so the, really the goal is to get the strain off of the hospitals and, and to keep people from dying. And those are the folks who are dying at, at a higher rate right now. And so we got to get our, our older folks vaccinated and then, um, educators who are student-facing, so those educators working with students directly will be in line next. Um, I, I do expect we, I know we do have some employees who are over 70, so they are eligible to be vaccinated right now. Um, I would assume some of them have already probably been vaccinated or signed up for vaccines. We are working, uh, with the Weld County Health Department. Uh, we have a weekly meeting with them now around, um, vaccines and, and being ready for that and working with Banner Health, our insurance provider, Aetna, and with, um, uh, UC Health to, to have a plan, uh, for vaccinating, uh, staff when the vaccine is available for our staff. So we will have a plan and we will be ready to launch that plan, um, as soon as that vaccine's available. Uh, we, our nurses and our health clerks and the folks who are working in those isolation rooms, uh, they are, uh, eligible for vaccine right now. So actually some of them were getting vaccinated as soon as today. I expect that they will be vaccinated this week, um, or at least in the next 10 or so days. Uh, so that's really good news. Uh, so they're working, you know, through the vaccine list and, and it's been really, um, interesting to see how in just the last few days, really Sunrise Health, UC Health, Banner Health, and the county have all come together, um, with a plan to, to deliver vaccines here in our community. So I feel really confident about that and excited about that. It can't come soon enough. They're saying probably early March. Uh, my fingers are crossed for, for maybe late February. Um, and thank you Pepper, Ms. Mueller, for your advocacy today, for getting educators vaccinated. Well, you're absolutely right, we got to get our educators vaccinated. Um, they, they are with each other and with children every single day. Um, testing for COVID. We are working on some, um, pretty, uh, sophisticated plans around testing. There's actually two lanes, one lane we've already begun, which is working directly with the county who has provided us with Binax Now testing, which is a rapid test that is the, the, a PCR. Nope, I lied. It, I don't know if it's a PCR, but it's the most reliable rapid test. And then, um, a curative, which is a PCR, which is a saliva test. Um, the county has provided those to us and we will begin next week piloting in four of our schools. Um, so if a, a student or a staff member is symptomatic, with permission, um, they can self-administer or we can administer the Binax, um, and determine right then if they're positive and if we need to quarantine. If they test negative, um, but they are symptomatic, we won't quarantine, we'll wait the four days. Um, and during those four days, we'll, we'll, um, strive to get that student or staff member, um, over to the district office for a curative test, which is a PCR. Um, so, you know, the benefit in having this testing ready now and to start it is that we hope to keep more children and staff in schools and to do less quarantining. I want to remind you that we'll also be doing a 10-day quarantine, um, in lieu of the previous, earlier 14-day quarantine that was required, it's now a 10-day quarantine. And we will allow staff to return on day eight if they have a negative PCR on day six or seven. Um, we, so we're going to start there, um, and, and we think that'll, that, you know, that'll, that's a move in the right direction. We don't have testing available for all of our schools yet. We are starting small to make sure we get this right. Um, then the second week, we will roll out to some additional schools. And then hopefully by then we will have heard about the Binax Now testing that is coming from the state and be able to implement a plan district-wide with that Binax Now testing that's coming from the state. My understanding with that test is that, uh, and we've already have, we provide the state information on who, how many staff we have, and then our staff have the ability to sign up, uh, for testing to be delivered directly to their home. A packet of, a package of tests to be delivered directly to their home, they're rapid tests. They will have to participate in a telehealth appointment while they are administering the Binax and receiving the results of that Binax Now. So, um, you know, I think all of this are layers to helping us to be able to stay open and, and have, um, the right people in school and the right people isolated or quarantined who, who need to participate in that. Um, then I, I want to just talk very quickly about the elementary and secondary schools relief funds. Um, this is the second round of these funds. Uh, these are the dollars President Matthews mentioned earlier in, in the work session. Uh, they, these dollars are intended, um, are assigned by the same formula that is used for title, uh, dollars. So District Six will see a significant portion of these dollars because as you all know, we are, we are a high, um, number of title, um, school, school district. And, um, so we have a lot of students who help us to qualify for this. Um, and those dollars will be significant. We will use those dollars, uh, to fill holes, uh, and to aggressively work to catch students up for the learning that has been lost. Now, we are still waiting on specific guidelines from the federal government, but we understand we'll have two and a half years to use these dollars. So we're not on the tight timeframe we were with the first round of relief dollars. Uh, so our intent will be, uh, to build a plan that, you know, is, is, um, robust and pretty intensive. I would expect that we will consider and, and very likely implement, um, extended school year and, and/or coming back early in the fall. Uh, Mr. Hayfley asked earlier if we were looking to extend the school year for everyone. Uh, we are not looking to do that at this point. Uh, that would require a, a full reopening of our master teacher contract and, and it would require us to pay every, every employee their per diem to do that. That's just, uh, that's not feasible. But I do think what will be feasible is to have, um, multiple sites with multiple offerings, um, to, to fill the holes that, that this year and last spring, um, have left with our students pre-K through 12. So I'm excited about that. I think, you know, these are real dollars, they will make a difference if we have a plan. And my promise to you, uh, Board of Education and to our community is that we will have a plan. And, and we will have a plan that will make a difference in terms of student achievement. Um, and I'm, I'm confident we can do that. I mean, you guys have watched how this team responds and the kind of work they're able to do. I, I know they can do this as well. And then Ms. Mueller mentioned, uh, that I, that I was on a panel today, um, to discuss legislative priorities. This was a panel that, um, was a partnership panel between the University of Northern Colorado, Ames Community College, um, the Greeley Chamber, Greeley Area Chamber of Commerce and, uh, District Six. And all of our lobbyists participated in it. We had a recorded message upfront from Senator Cook about his priorities and, and where his focus will be this year. Then we heard from Representative Young, who did the same thing. And then we took questions, um, through the panel. I saw, looked to me like we had, um, over a hundred participants at one time and it looked like around 91 stayed most of the time. So, um, I think we had, you know, we had a good audience for that. But this is really the start of, of beginning to identify those legislative priorities. Um, along those lines, I guess I would, the other thing I would, would suggest to you all, and I would encourage you to reach out to President Matthews or Vice President Pappas. Um, our Board of Education could certainly consider doing a resolution, a letter to the legislators, a letter to the State Board, any of those kinds of pieces around state testing. Um, I did, uh, I met last week with the Denver area superintendents and Boards of Education are beginning to gear up and provide that kind of feedback, um, at the state level. So I think that's something we should be talking about over the next week or two. And then finally, I want to say, um, thank you. That January is School Board Recognition Month. And, um, and we've, you know, I think this has been probably the hardest, hardest year to be a school board member. Um, as, as many of the situations that we've seen come at us, there's just a know-when. And I'm not, and not just COVID. I mean, all of the, all of the events and, and incidents that have occurred in our country over the last 10 to 12 months, uh, you know, there, there's a lot of divisiveness in our, in our community and in our state and our country. And that makes it very hard to be an elected official. And you do this as a volunteer. You give hundreds and hundreds of hours, um, to ensure that we're providing the best education possible to the students in this community. And, and for that, my staff and I want to thank you. Um, we want to, we want you to know that you are recognized. I do expect that, um, both our city councils, the City Council of Greeley and the City Council of Evans, will be doing a resolution at their next regular business meeting, recognizing you all and honoring you for, um, School Board Recognition Month. You'll also begin to see some other pieces I think we'll be pushing out through social media just to create a, a heightened awareness around the importance of school board members and, and this, this volunteer work, um, that you all do, not only on Monday nights, a couple of times a month, but, um, all the other work you do within the community to support, um, kids in our school. And so thank you, board members, um, and, and, uh, thank you for, for all you do. You do resolutions for all the other groups. You'll do resolution for principals and paraprofessionals and bus drivers. So, um, our city councils will take care of you all and do a resolution for you all or, or some kind of proclamation for you all, uh, to recognize you. So thank you for that. With that, um, those are my comments and I'm happy, I'm happy to take questions if you have questions.
Are there any questions, guys, uh, for Dr. Pilch? Mr. Tally.
Uh, you had a lot of information. Is that going to be sent out in, uh, some sort of written communication? As a parent, I just want to know the updates and.
Yeah. So most. Yeah, no, you're good, Mr. Tally. So, uh, most of that you will find in, in our weekly memo. Um, and, um, there's an attachment in the weekly memo around what was sent out to staff, too, um, in what we call the intercom. So yes, I think you have all of that. You, you don't have anything on the, um, elementary, secondary, um, schools relief funding yet. Where those dollars have just, that information has just been coming in over the weekend. But I think everything else in there is there. That one other thing I, um, just want to highlight again that we, we shared last Friday, I think. But, um, you know, we did complete with the city of Greeley, this land swap on that, um, boomerang property. And it, you know, it's just a huge testament to the relationship we have with the city of Greeley and their staff and the city council that, you know, that they even engaged in that with us. They didn't have to. And I think it's a win-win and it certainly is going to benefit District Six for decades to come.
Ms. Mueller.
The one thing I was encouraged by, um, in the legislative, uh, review, and I wanted to ask you about Dr. Pilch, was this, um, topic that, um, Representative Young brought up about, uh, maintaining funding for the K-12s, schools even with the loss of students due to COVID. Uh, how likely do you think that is that we're going to be able to maintain our funding even if we've lost students since the October count? Or, or maybe not even related to the October count?
Well, um, I, you know, I think that will be a strong message coming out of, um, most communities and most school districts, of course, and from their lobbyists. Um, I think, uh, you know, I, you also heard though Sandra Solan talk about not wanting to have competing interests. So I think it'll, you know, it'll all come down to how the, the budget is able to balance. But I, I think we feel, feel fairly optimistic that we will receive some, if not all of that funding. Um, the projections so far for next school year are more favorable than we anticipated, at least for the coming year. Um, so I think it, you know, we've made plans and we, we are prepared should we need to spend into our reserves if we aren't fully funded. Um, so we'll, you know, we'll, I'll keep you posted. I, I, you know, when I know, you'll know. It's good to have Representative Young, um, as the one who put it out there and as opposed to lobbyists being the ones who put it out there or me putting it out there. And so I think if, if we've got legislative support for that, that'll make a huge difference.
Any other questions for Dr. Pilch on the reopening or, uh, any of that that she's brought up? All right. Our next item then, guys, is, um, Dr. Pilch, you didn't have anything else, correct?
No. Thank you.
The next item is to approve an agenda. So if someone would be so kind as to make a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley, Evans, School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you all. Um, is there any discussion on motion? Don't see any hands. Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. We also need to approve our consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley, Evans, School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing then, Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is, uh, a starfish award. And so, uh, Dr. Pilch, I'll, I'll give this to you or do I give, do you want me to give this directly, uh, to Ms. Andy Lee?
You know what, let's just give it right to Andy Lee. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, I see you now. Uh, welcome.
Thank you, President Matthews. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Um, one of the best parts of my job is to be able to go in and see what awesome educators are doing every day in our district. And it's been a challenge with COVID, um, probably more so in the music venue and your music classes than any other class. That is an extremely hard class to move online. Um, and it's also a very hard class to cohort because you have very different students, as you know, Pepper, that like to take band. And it was really fun. You mentioned two students in your, um, earlier work session and I have had the privilege of having one of them. And I know Kathy Azari has had many, many of our students throughout the years. So I would like to recognize Kathy Azari as this month's Starfish Award winner. And the purpose of the starfish, if you don't know the poem, it's a little girl that is throwing starfish into the sea and all the adults are looking at her going, what are you doing and why are you doing this? And what purpose is this going to make? It's not going to matter. And the little girl turns to the adults and said, well, it matters to this one, this one starfish. And so I'm trying to find people in our system who have that philosophy. It matters to this one. Every single one of their students is a starfish. Every single one of them matter. And Kathy is one that really does exemplify this reality. So I'm going to talk about two pieces. First, I wanted to acknowledge that this amazing teacher went out, got donations so that when her students probably had to go online, there were digital keyboards that they could take home so they could continue actual music education in a remote environment, which is a pretty creative way of, of doing the music education piece online. We're used to being able to be in a band class. She didn't have a band class. But the day I'm talking about specifically is October 31st. So I was at Burnwood and I was able to go into Kathy's class. And we got to have a multitudinous amount of keyboards socially distanced. And students were learning keyboarding. Now, these are students who may have been band teachers. These are students who have never picked up an instrument. Because when you cohort it, they don't say, oh, all the band students get to go together. They say, this group of 25 students, you are learning band for an hour and a half every day for this many weeks, period and stop. So she had to take people who may never have been interested in music, may never have liked music, may never have even held an instrument and actually produced music. And she managed to do that. So we started learning keyboarding and I was able to learn, um, a little bit of Michael Myers' Halloween and that was pretty cool. And then she switched us over to bucket drumming. And I am not what you consider a person who has any kind of rhythm. But with a lot of help and a lot of visuals, I was able to actually do the Monster Mash buckets with a whole bunch of other students. It was incredible. And then after our little break, she actually did a technology piece with us where she allowed us to listen to some video shorts that had no words at all. And just music. And she made us come up with the emotion or the storyline behind those musicals. So instead of using words, what was the music saying to us? And what emotion was the music demonstrating to us? So we actually had to do some higher level thinking with, um, some composer pieces of, of musical shorts. So that was just one day in the life of one of our teachers. And the best part about. And the best part about this award, President Matthews, is that I could literally do this award every single day and still find a new staff member to represent. That's how many amazing people we have working in our system. We don't have enough board members to recognize all of the wonderful things that are happening in our district. And that's a privilege to be able to say. So I just wanted to present Kathy Azari to you. I wanted to present the fact that we are actually teaching music in a COVID world and a world that is remote. So quick, thank you for Kathy. And we are going to lose her this spring. She is retiring. So we are hoping that she is creating a book to pass on some of these good ideas to us.
And Andy, I don't know if Kathy is able to see the chat since she's not a panelist. You can see it, Kathy? Because I just wanted you to know how, you know, the board members have so much positive to say about you. And we miss Doran terribly, and we will miss you when you, when you go.
Thank you. And it's, it's really been an honor over 31 years to see all the wonderful students come through. And I'm excited for the future for District Six. So, thank you.
Guys, feel free if you have something to say, since Kathy can't see everything. If you just want to raise your hand, feel free to do that.
And she, she could, President Matthews, she did indicate to me that she did see the chat. But, but still, love her up. I mean, you spend these kinds of years in education. We, we can give a few minutes to this.
Mr. Haley?
I had the privilege of teaching with Mrs. Azari a long time ago. I had hair and freckles at the time. And, and it was always delightful to be able to go down into her room and just watch her work her magic. And it didn't matter if somebody had never picked up an instrument or if they'd been playing for years. Everyone felt very special, cared and loved for. And by the end of the year, it was truly amazing what she had accomplished. And I was always amazed and very appreciative of her incredible teaching skills. Kathy, you'll be missed, and thank you very much for making a difference.
I'm not sure about the hair part, but yes.
Ms. Solis?
So as someone who's not very musically inclined, I am so grateful that you really push kiddos out of their comfort zone and really try to do an instrument, play an instrument, just introduce that kind of stuff. And we all know how much music and art is, is so important to kids. So just thank you for your passion for our students and passion for music. It's made a difference in our district, and we've been lucky to have you. We'll be sad to, to have you leave our district, but you will leave behind some, some great stories. And again, hopefully, some of your knowledge will be passed on to the, to the next music teachers. So thank you very much. I hope you enjoy your retirement, but that you come back to District Six because we'll miss you.
Ms. Mueller?
So I was trying to figure out if I could say something without getting emotional. But the gift that Kathy brings is finding students early on and then plugging them into the right instrument and empowering them to go farther than they think they can. And it is sort of magical to watch. And then pulling together a bunch of middle schoolers into a concert that invigorates elementary school kids to join band. And then, I don't know what she's thinking when she did this, taking them all to Casablanca. It's amazing. And so as a chaperone that has done that a few times with her, I, I cannot say enough about how many students in this district are musicians now because of Mrs. Azari.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Yeah, Mrs. Azari, you're, you're truly a, a legend in this school district and have impacted so many lives. And I am, I wish I could in, try to get you to stay for, for another year. But I, I know that in, you're a testament to when talent and dedication and love for students that, that matters so much in the good times. I mean, it always matters, but it certainly matters in the tough times. And so I so appreciate the way that you have been able to, to find a way to have band and communicate with your kids this year and, and to, and to carry on. It's, it's been a, I know it's been an especially, it's been a challenging year for everybody. But, but for our music teachers and our orchestra teachers and our, our band teachers. And I know it's been incredibly challenging. So, so thank you for not, not just your years of dedication and service, but, but especially for this last year. We so appreciate you. Our next item, guys, we'll let Mrs. Azari go, but move on to the, to the next item of business. And that is our first read of policy, GBI, criminal history record information. And so this is a first read, doesn't require any action from us tonight. But Dr. Pilch, would you like to give us a little bit of information on this, on this new amendment?
Thank you, President Matthews. So this is, this is required by Colorado state law. It, it, it is a policy that ensures we're following all of the guidelines and training and requirements to ensure that our employees and our potential employees' personal information is safeguarded and secure.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move right along to our next item, and that is public notice of meetings and designated posting sites. And so this is, and this is an action item and requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans District Six approves the district website as the designated posting site for the public notice of meetings.
Second.
Thank you both. This is pretty routine. We do this every year, and it's required by law that we, that we tell you where we're going to meet. And I don't know if there's any discussion from, from board members or from Dr. Pilch. Not seeing any. So, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is a second read and adoption of policy GB GL staff victim leave. And this also is an action item and requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six adopts policy GB GL staff victim leave as presented.
You can.
Second, second.
Thank you all. Sorry, I got ahead of you. Is there, this is our second read, so we, we considered this, looked at this already once. So is there anything else that board members or Dr. Pilch needs to say about this one? Mr. Tally?
Just real quick, is, does this include cyber, any sort of cyber harassment or online?
I assume it will, Mr. Tally. I mean, we did not outline that in the policy, but, but of course, cyber harassment or online harassment would, would fall within a, you know, victimization behavior.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is our school improvement plans. And I believe that this is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the school improvement plans for the priority improvement schools.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, before we open this up for board members, I'm going to turn this over, over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. This, you know, this is pretty straightforward. These are the school unified improvement plans that boards of education throughout the state are required to approve on an annual basis. And you know from the information that you've been provided previously that these are detailed plans and that they guide the work of, of our schools. Dr. Dattery, anything that you think, anything you want to add?
I would just add a couple of quick things that the, there are some school unified improvement plans that are not a part of this submission as they are on the biennial, and those are included. So just as a reminder. And that these will then post, they go to, we submit these to the Colorado Department of Education this Friday, and then they will be, you know, go through their review of any specific plans they may need to give us feedback on. And the final UIPs will then be on School View as of April 15th of 2021.
You're muted, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah.
Thank you. I should never mute. I never can remember to stop, stop muting myself. Any, any questions for Dr. Dattery or for Dr. Pilch on your school improvement plans? Ms. Pappas?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say that I really appreciate that. It feels, it gives a sense of normalcy that we are approving school improvement plans tonight because it shows that we are continuing the work of our district. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the work of you and your staff, and of course, all of the building leadership team members that had a part in this as well. So thank you for your work.
Mr. Tally?
I just want to thank you, your whole team, for always keeping us up to date on what's, what's going on. You know, my grandpa always told me, you look good, you feel good, you are good. So when our buildings look good, our students feel good, and then they do good. So I, I think it's very, very important that, that we keep this up to date. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. So, Ms. Crane?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our last item tonight is our district unified improvement plan, and this is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the district unified improvement plan as presented. Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I'll give this one to you as well.
Thank you, President Matthews. As, as indicated, you all learned about this plan in our earlier work session. And so I think you're ready to go. I appreciate Ms. Pappas's comment about the sense of normalcy. I mean, this, you know, I, I just want to assure you the work of the district continues. It looks a little different, but, but the work continues, and that's a big part of this unified improvement plan.
Any questions or comments from board members? I know we all just did this an hour ago, so, but one last chance. All right. Mr. Haley? Oh, you were getting ready for the vote, sorry. I saw you come off mute. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. And we do have one, one last item, just to make sure. But I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public participation tonight, correct?
That's correct.
They might know that there's a football game starting and don't want to trouble themselves tonight to visit with us. So we are thankful that you guys have joined us, for those of you who have joined us tonight. And this meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.